Good evening, I will call this board meeting to be adjourned.
Here.
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 Here. We invite the United States of America and to recover for this stand one nation, one earth, and the middle school to the justice for all. Struggling with the microphone again. Okay. In your board packet we have the minutes from the last meeting, are there any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Rachel and Tim to approve the minutes as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. At this time on our agenda, we have visitors to be heard. We have two guests with us and then we'll open it up for public and I'll make a brief announcement when we get to that. So first up Hannah Mostert.
I always have to move these microphones up but I'm afraid to touch them so if you can hear me okay, I won't touch it. Thank you for having me, I'm Hannah Mostert. My role in the school district is the elementary librarian at Jolly but I am here representing the Vermillion Parent Teacher Organization tonight. I'm the president of the parent teacher organization and was just kind of asked here to speak about some of the things that we've done over the last year. So I guess I will start out with kind of at the end of last year, our crazy end to the school year that none of us could have foreseen. PTO was able to offer the teachers in the district a teacher appreciation gift during the week of teacher appreciation by working with Cafe Brillet and Wilson Florist to offer a rose and a cupcake to the teachers who were at home, we felt like they needed something extra special given everything that had been going on and offered our support. The PTO, our main role is obviously to support teachers and students through the community. And so that's always our underlying thought when we are trying to decide on what to do. We often decide, well, is this something that's going to support our teachers indirectly or directly and our students? This year, at the beginning of the school year, we usually offer a welcome back to school gift to the teachers and at that time, the foundation was looking for donations for COVID, for help with COVID various items and things. So instead of doing or as our gift to the teachers, we decided to increase that budget a little bit and we offered a thousand dollar donation to the foundation to add to some of those items that they were wanting to purchase. Some of the other things that we typically do at the start of the year, we often give a gift card to the secretaries at the schools just to offer, you know, if there are random things that pop up that students need that the school doesn't already have, PTO offers a card to kind of assist with that. The main thing that we do however is we offer grants for teachers, building grants, classroom grants and grade level grants. That often, I mean, there's a wide variety of what has been purchased with those grants. This year so far, we have given approximately fifteen hundred dollars in teacher grants, specific classroom teacher grants. This year they've purchased, interestingly enough, things related to what we needed this year that we probably haven't needed in prior years. We've purchased voice amplifiers for teachers so that they can be better heard under their masks, digital thermometer, air purifiers. And then of course, the traditional things, some modified seating, some stability balls for classrooms, clothing baskets to hold student belongings and that was actually a way of possibly doing social, adding to the social distancing in the classroom so that they could break up their single row of closets and kind of go every other and they purchased clothes baskets to keep the student coats and backpacks in so that they wouldn't have to be so close when they're putting their stuff away. Curriculum materials and then of course, classroom organization materials as well are some of the things that we've used or that we've offered grant money for, for the teachers. The grant process is simple, the teachers can become a member of PTO for ten dollars and then from that ten dollars then they can apply for a hundred and fifty dollars in classroom grants. So I'd say it's probably worth it especially for those teachers that utilize those grants each year. Each fall, we do teacher appreciation and support through a conference meal and we actually also follow that up in the spring for spring conferences. And we do that for Austin, Jolly and the middle school. We provide a, in prior years it's been a potluck but this year was different of course again, we just had that catered in with pizza I believe in the fall and then we have Taco John's for the teachers during the night of conferences. Let's see, at Austin, in prior years, PTO has funded the watchdog program at Austin. We also host an ice cream social at the beginning of the school year each year, again unfortunately not this year, but we did, we have done that in years past. This year we offered a standing, excuse me, a building grant for Jolly to purchase some standing desks for students, again for modified seating. And the middle school used a building grant to purchase board games for students to play at lunch as well as a microwave for students to utilize in the cafeteria at lunch. Another thing that PTO has offered this year is we offered a building grant for the startup costs for the RAC which is the program that Shibley-Hodges has spearheaded and is kicking off with a drive I believe coming up shortly here in a few days maybe. So we offered some startup costs to get that going at the middle school. The biggest accomplishment I'd say we have had this year so far is the fact that we were able to do our fun run this fall. When school started, none of us knew exactly where we were going to be day one or where we are right now. So we kind of played it by ear but once school got started, we decided, you know what, we can do this. And so as I wrote, as I put on our t-shirts, we came, we wore our masks, we had fun. And it was a little different as prior years but I think that's the theme for this school year. We were actually able to raise between five and six thousand dollars this year from the fun run and it was not even, it wasn't a typical year so we were really happy about that. We were outside on the practice field and did some relay races and walks around the track there and we did what we could and I think the kids still did have a really great time. We were actually, one of the things we were really happy about, we were able to purchase t-shirts for every student at Austin and Jolly. That is usually something that is sponsored by local businesses. This year because we made the decision so quickly, we weren't thinking that we were going to be able to do that, but we were offered, it was last minute offering from the Main Street Inn which is the new bed and breakfast that's coming up on Main Street, the former Sigma New House, they offered to front the cost of the entire t-shirt order which is usually over three thousand dollars. And that's again, one of the ways that allows us to make a profit and fundraise because those bigger bills are often paid for with sponsors. So we were really happy about that and I wanted to throw that in there that we were really grateful that they were able to sponsor those t-shirts. The last thing is we are hoping to and planning on doing carnival in the next couple of weeks on April twenty-third from five thirty to seven thirty. That's in the past has been kind of just a community service, fun thing and again another thing we weren't sure if we were going to be able to offer this year because of situations and COVID and all of those things. But one of the safety mitigations that we're offering is hopefully, hopefully if weather permits, having it outside, so we'll be having it on the track this year. And kind of are seeing it as a fun way to celebrate the accomplishments that we've made this year and all of the hard things that we've had to endure and kind of a final last celebration. So we're hoping that that obviously will still go if it's rain or heaven forbid snow, we will, we do have a backup plan of moving it indoors but definitely spread out among two gyms and the commons and all of that. So we're hoping that that goes off without a hitch and that's what I have for you about PTO. I tried to talk as fast as I could while still being understandable. Did you have any questions?
I have one, just in case people are watching and wondering how can I get involved? Should they contact you, what would be the best way?
Involved in PTO specifically?
Yes.
Absolutely, we have vermilionpto.org is our website and that was created two or three years ago and that gives a lot of information on upcoming events as well as if teachers want to apply for grants, they go through the website to apply for grants and then volunteer opportunities. So if we are still looking for a lot of volunteers for the carnival, mostly just running the carnival games, we have lots of fun games that we want to provide this year but we need people to man those stations and it's not hard, you just have to stand there and smile and take kids tickets and give them their token when they play and send them on their way. So yeah, vermilionpto.org is our website and they can definitely follow us there. We're also on Facebook.
Other questions for Mrs. Mostert?
Junior achievement will be there making cotton candy so.
Yes, they will.
Come and get sticky.
Yes, we're excited to be able to utilize the concessions building on the track there. And again, we're really hoping it's not as windy as it was today either because we're going to have popcorn and candy flying.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have visitors from the Vermillion Public School Foundation. Are you, I don't know who to introduce so I'll let you come forward. Okay.
I'm not sure that we have it on here to move back and forth but. Do you see a next slide on there?
I don't see one either. It's rebooting right now. There we go. Okay, let's go back. All right, we got that technical.
Hi, my name is Katerina Weimar, I'm the president of the Vermillion Public School Foundation and I want to thank you for letting us come and present. And before I get started, I'd like to let my colleagues introduce themselves as well.
I'm Dr. Dan Moreland, I'm a board member on the foundation.
And I'm Karen Davies, also a board member on the foundation.
And with us behind is Sutu Vae, she's on our committee as well that we're talking about today. So we're here today to talk to you about taking the next step and getting an executive director. So for those of you maybe who don't know, the Vermillion Public School Foundation was founded in two thousand and six, so we've been here sometime and we were supported, founded that time really to support opportunities for our learners to succeed in a diverse world. So I'll give it over to Karen. And do you want me to do, I'll let you do the slides.
There you go, perfect. So we did have a little more lengthy packet for you to look at and we didn't want to take that much time, we're just going to kind of summarize some of the pictures that we have in there. I'm the numbers person, Sheila, my best friend. So I wanted to show you what we've done especially just in the most recent past, so in the last four years since two thousand and seventeen and these are our calendar year numbers. The Vermillion Public School Foundation has raised from generous donations of the community of alumni, of friends, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through the end of two thousand and twenty and as of yesterday, that was increased to four hundred and nineteen thousand, so we've had additional forty-four thousand in this first three months of two thousand and twenty-one. You can see on the slides that our giving comes in three different areas. We have gifts that are added to endowments, those endowments are invested in perpetuity and we use their earnings. We'll talk about those endowments on the next slide. The middle portion which is the larger amount are restricted gifts that can be used for current purposes. So the donor gives a gift and wants us to use it for a specific program or a specific use and we'll talk about that on a separate slide also. So the one I want to focus on right now is the little blue one that is the bottom, those are the unrestricted gifts. Unrestricted gifts for a not-for-profit organization are the hardest thing to get. People who want to generously give, have an interest in giving, they want to have their gift used for a certain purpose. But those unrestricted gifts are so vital for the operations of the organization, that pays your administrative costs, your fundraising costs, your database fees, et cetera, your tax filings. Our budget is about ten thousand dollars a year. You can see that we're generating between six and seven thousand dollars a year in giving. At least half of that annual amount comes from the dedication of the board, so half of that giving comes from the few board members that we have. So very, very supportive, the board members not just with their money but also with the time that they spend on the foundation. The next slide shows that our endowments by area of what they're supporting, our total endowments as of the end of March with a few gifts that are added into there that we received in the first couple of weeks of April, now has a market value of a hundred and eighty, just under a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Contributed value is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That has been an increase since this period of time we're talking about, in December of sixteen, the endowment value was sixty-one thousand dollars. So during that four-year period of time, we had a three hundred and two percent increase in our endowment. We went from seven small endowments to twelve endowments at this point. The next slide is going to show you that middle area, what do we do just for the current gifts that come in that are restricted for the endowment earnings, what are we helping the foundation or the Vermillion School District with? And you can see there are several areas, we've got them grouped into, we help with academic support. One of the things that we like to do as a foundation is we like to find out what the school is missing. We don't want to fund something that can be funded with the budget, so we like to find programs that the school is not able to fund. And then we like to step in and fund those programs and if they're successful, then the school board can take them over as soon as they're able. And arts attack, the first one on the list was the perfect example of that, the arts attack. When we had the budget cuts, we had to take arts out of the elementary schools, the foundation came in and supported for three years an arts attack program. It was successful, so the school board took that over at that point. We also have professional development, every year Kim Johnson is the head of committee, the teachers are able to apply for a professional development grant and that allows several of our teachers to get summer stipends while they're doing additional training. The teaching workshops, the one I can think of again is one of those partnerships that we had back in two thousand and seventeen. We had an issue with not needing an improvement in our reading scores and so the foundation stepped forward, we found a donor who wanted to make a gift to support this area and for three years we had workshops that all of the teachers came to to learn how to better teach reading and comprehensive. Other things, we have scholarships, we have nine scholarships that are offered at this point, six of those are high school or from endowments, three of those are from current gifts. We also spend between two and three thousand dollars every year for camps for middle school people, for music, science and leadership camps. The student experiential learning is a new focus that we have which was brought to our attention from our strategic planning about a year ago, that there's just not money for the student field trips anymore. And so our goal is, we've started doing some annual fundraising, we want to increase that to allow the classes to go on a field trip and get some experiential learning. We've also participated in a couple of the more recent high school trips to Scotland and Germany. Everybody has heard, I think, of the Angel Fund by now, that is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts. Especially during the pandemic, we were able to supply three thousand four hundred and seventy-two touches since we started the Angel Fund in September of two thousand and nineteen. So fifteen thousand dollars has been spent to touch the students and a touch may be one student, it may be one student multiple times, it's just a touch for some reason. Of course, right now the biggest expense in that is the face masks that were provided. Otherwise, the order of need that has come up is clothes, a lot of winter coats, a lot of boots, a lot of hats, a lot of mittens, shoes is also a big thing, food security, a lot of meals. Let's see if I had a couple more. Then we have dental hygiene products, transportation, school supplies, all of those things to help the students fill their basic needs so they can concentrate on their academic success as well. We do activity support with the music program, with athletics, with the drama club, we help pay for the expenses of the volunteer day, the annual volunteer day and then for facilities with the great help of the athletic boosters who did a lot of the work, we were able to stick our foot in and help a little bit with the vets complex. We renovated the teachers lounge in the high school, we redid all the shelving in the libraries, we have provided some music equipment, we did the memorial garden at Austin and we have classroom technology especially in this past year where we were able to pay for the technology needed to teach in a virtual environment. So those are the kind of things that we enjoy doing. One more note and I'm going to pass this on. I mentioned how much we've given, I've mentioned how much we've raised, I've mentioned how much our endowment has grown. Our net worth has grown to three hundred and eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars. In two thousand and sixteen, our net worth was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we've increased that to three hundred and eight thousand. We look forward to continuing to support the Vermillion School District and the students but as you can tell today, our board is maxed out, we need a little bit of help.
Now we'll turn it over to Dan.
So as we think about how an executive director could really enhance the impact that we have on the foundation, really what we're looking at is how can we increase the funding that we can generate, right? That way we can support the activities of the school district, whether that, you know, student learning experiences, teach professional development or just other programs that might be outside the school's means at the current time. And that also would include, you know, working with past alumni of the school district, with community members, getting those connections, kind of having someone that's the face of the foundation that's out there because we're a board of volunteers, we all have day jobs that we are working with, so it's great when we can have someone there that could be out there advocating on our behalf, on behalf of the school for the different initiatives that are taking place. And part of that will be partnering with other organizations in the community, whether that's PTO or the booster clubs or what have you. And really, at the end of the day, we're hoping that we can, you know, increase our funding for current projects but then also increase our funding and maybe even establish new funding through endowments that can help support the actual growth to support school priorities over the years. If we go to the next slide. We can look at another school in the state, Aberdeen Public School Foundation, they had a very similar net worth when they started with their executive director in two thousand and nine and they've had a lot of success and we certainly can't promise that this would be something that we would have but this is certain, kind of gives you an example of some of the growth that's happened within the state and something we would, you know, would love to have happen here and we're at a very similar kind of starting point as we look at where we are right now. So hopefully there'd be the potential to grow as a foundation so we can better support the work that's going on in the school district.
So how do we envision the executive director's role? Well, there, you know, as we've said before, it's something that we realize that as a volunteer board, there are a lot of things we're not going to be able to accomplish. So we've kind of looked and put this into three different areas where we think an executive director would need to look at and I'm not going to read all these things but I want to pull out a couple of the areas or the points that we think are really important. So one of the areas that we have listed is development. So we really want that executive director to identify, cultivate and solicit new donors so that we can, you know, fund those programs that we deem or that we deem together as needing funding. Another thing that would be really important were for them to work together, not a school district but with a school board and really develop goals and see, okay, what can be met with those public-private partnerships, want to be able to work together, be able to work together. And then another area where we think there's tremendous opportunity is grant writing. You know, writing, you know, there are a lot of grants out there and we feel we could bring a lot more money through grant writing. Another area which is very important is public relations and marketing. So in addition to, you know, the normal social media platforms, the updates and those kind of things, we want them to be able to develop in concert with the administration, you know, a regular communication. We want them to be on the ground, be able to speak with teachers and staff and the administration and really see what are your needs, where can we partner together, have the time to do that. And so those are some of the important areas that we identified. Additionally, obviously there are a lot of administrative things that need to be done. We want to manage that strategic plan that we have, make sure that our projects are on track and we're really, you know, build that curve up, make sure that we're there, have someone to look at that. We want them to attend school board meetings and strategic planning sessions, really work with the board and administration and see, okay, are our goals properly aligned? Do we need to change something? Where can we help? You know, and then there's the additional things with taxes and such, but you know, these are just a couple of the things that we think an executive director would really make a difference. So where, what are we actually asking, where do we go from here? So we want to increase the impact that we're able to give and move forward with an executive director. And to be able to do that, you saw our financials, we think hiring a full-time, a part-time director would be a good start and we're requesting that the school board support that for three years and we figured it's approximately about twenty thousand a year and that would be a commitment for salary and benefits. We're open to sharing an employee, you know, we want to make sure that we have clear-cut duties that everyone knows, okay, this is what, you know, these are the duties, this is what we want to do. And when we go through that, we would want to have a board where the school board was or a committee with the school board to be able to figure out, okay, who's the appropriate candidate, does that meet needs of both the school and the foundation if that's what we decide to do? You know, one option that we thought about, this is what Aberdeen does, is, you know, after those three years, you know, have that person be a school employee, then they get those benefits, you know, we might be able to get really good candidates for that and then bill the school, the foundation after that time. So this is what Aberdeen does, they bill back and this is kind of the way we think, you know, that might be a good idea. We want to really increase that communication and impact that the executive director would have by having them onsite. So it's really important for them to be able to exchange ideas with you, you know, on a day-to-day basis, here, where are the troubles, where do we need something, you know, sort of have the pulse on the ground. So this is kind of what we think would be very advantageous. What would we bring? Well, in addition to our operation. Well, in addition to our operational budget, which Karen was talking about, we would want to hire the search and hire costs, you know, pay for software that is needed, computer and other hardware that would be needed, and any other non-salary expenses. We feel that now would be an excellent time to take the next move with the school district, considering, you know, bringing, you know, what are we going to do with the elementary schools? We think that this would just be a great opportunity for that person to really be in on the ground with that and be able to help bring in extra money so that we can meet the needs of our children, not just now, but, you know, for all the years to come. I'll open up for questions. Thank you.
Questions?
The packet was very helpful as well.
Okay. Karen, do you have anything else to add? Or Sue?
I would just say that what we're doing, I think, can also have an economic impact. You know, when people move to Vermillion with young families, one of the first questions that they ask is, how good are your schools? And I think being able to say that we have a vibrant school district and we have a lot of support really goes a long way in terms of getting people to get excited and to move here. So there's that piece of it. It may not be the most important piece, but I think it is, and I think it should be considered too. That's all.
All right. Thank you.
So, sorry, can I ask? I was trying to be curious. So with the unrestricted gifts, you know, you're, I'm on your side with this, but how do you, what's your plan for projecting where you can have a revenue that could generate that bill-back salary dollars, say even three years? Because that's been very stable. So is there anything from the Aberdeen plan that suggests that's possible? What's the target marketing for that?
So obviously, we need to do new fundraising, new types of fundraising. Our fundraising right now is fairly limited. We do a newsletter twice a year, and we do social media. So we definitely need to look at events, we need to look at increased fundraising with a added focus for those unrestricted operational-type gifts. Our focus, at least in the last couple of newsletters, has all been very focused on specific programs or projects. So we need to get that unrestricted giving back in front of our constituents. We have also adopted a fee, so any giving that comes in for the Vermillion Public School Foundation is going to help pay for the operations, help pay for the fundraising costs and the operating costs of raising those gifts. We did institute that fee, and we notified all of our stakeholders that it is a current gift fee on any current gift of one and a half percent, and an annual endowment fee of one and a half percent per year. So one and a half percent on current gifts, one and a half percent on the annual endowment market value. Those will both help the funding for this position.
So is that, when you, in the endowment, you do have operations, is that where that fee goes into?
We do, we do have one of our endowments that specifically, the earnings from that endowment are to be used for operations, and it generates about $1,000 a year. So in addition, all of our, all 12 of our endowments will be charged a one and a half percent fee each year on their market value, and that fee will be used for the operations.
Okay. I feel like I'm on Shark Tank, and I don't even watch the show.
Does that make sense? Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. So the combination of increased giving and a focus, or an increased focus on unrestricted giving, as well as this new fee, is going to help fund that position?
And the reason I ask, I think because the public, if they don't know, they should know the amazing, wonderful things you've done. And the whole goal of this request is to be able to not just continue that, but to expand the support of the district. I think sometimes people worry that, well, if my money is going to just pay for the operation, are we going to lose the Angel Fund? Are we going to have reductions? And that, you know, right, you have a solid plan that that's not something that's going to happen. This isn't going to become...
That is definitely the plan for this person, is to increase our support of the Vermillion School District. Not to maintain it, not to reduce it, but we need to increase it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
I just want to say thank you for your time and good plan. I also want to, I know what was, I was on the board back in 1415, knew what was in the kitty at that time. And a big credit to all of you, credit to the past board members for starting the foundation '06, bringing it forward, and a big credit to the lady in the audience that really helped since 15 forward, Ms. Humble Susan Toomey. Thanks, Susan, and everybody else.
Okay. At this time, if there are any members of the public who wish to address the Vermillion School Board, you may do so. You will have five minutes' time, and there will be no action taken on your request. Not seeing anyone who looks like they're here to address the public, from the public. Okay. We will continue on then to the approval of agenda and conflict. Are there any changes to the agenda for this evening?
No, there is not.
No changes to the agenda, so I need a motion to approve or accept the agenda?
Motion to approve.
By Carol.
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. All in favor of approving the agenda as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Next, we move to conflicts of interest. I have reviewed the agenda and have no conflicts this evening.
No conflicts for Tim?
None for Rachel.
None for Jim?
I do have a conflict with item 8D under new business.
But as I understand it, that does not present a financial conflict, so...
That's correct. It does not present a financial conflict.
So while it is a conflict with the agenda item, we will have Carol abstain from voting on that one item, and you'll see why when we get there.
Thank you.
But there is not a declared conflict that requires board action under South Dakota Codeified Law 3-23. So thank you for that. Next, we move on unfinished business. Facilities, elementary.
Yes. I guess we'll start, first of all, with just a quick recap of the administrative addition and old-school addition to high school. All is well there. We've, last month, reported that we were substantially complete, and we still just have some minor dirt work out front. We have a few pipes to cut off for, that are water inlets. So once the, well, now that the ground is thawed, those two things will be done, and that will be an officially completed project. So we will no longer report on those, but we will slide into a new facility study topic, which we'll start with now. So I'll turn it over to Tim and let him share a little bit about what the committee's been working on about an elementary addition.
Yeah, very exciting. As you recall, for several years, we've debated that topic in our facility plan, wondered if, when is the right time to potentially replace the two elementary buildings? And then we kind of kicked that into high gear at the beginning of this school year term to really study it more. So I think the conclusion of the committee has been, we've come to a time to, that it is time to replace those two aging elementary buildings. So what we are proposing, and the board will have to make this a formal proposition in months to come, as we get through the education process with the community, but we would propose a $26 million bond issue over a 30-year timeframe. And you see on your screen the potential of what that could look like. And it would be connected to the middle school, to the west. The district already owns that land, which is fortunate, I'm glad we don't face an issue of placement or purchase of land, so that helps the equation. Quite honestly, that helps the bond issue amount substantially, too. What this new building... What this new building would do, it would improve our elementaries from two buildings to one, get us into that 21st century learning environment. The new elementary school, you see on the screen there, the frontage would be along Dartmouth Street. And the middle school would maintain their entrance, or their separate entrance as it is today. And there appears to be no issue with potentially widening Dartmouth Street for the drop-off area. You see a curved drive there for public entry point. And the efficiencies, some of the efficiencies that this would gain us is staff not traveling between buildings, or if they do need to travel between middle school and elementary school, much, much easier commute, don't even have to warm up your car. We would not be transporting food from middle school to the elementary school, which is, I mean, that just goes without saying, that's a huge win. Less time on the bus for kids, so kids wouldn't have to ride from school to school and then wherever their drop-off, or in the morning, hit multiple schools before they reach their final destination. Should mean less time on the bus. Also for parents doing the pickup and delivery of children. Gains efficiencies for them and for all employers in town. We know reality is that some parents need to run away from work and do that pickup duty, and that would save them some time, too, if they have children in middle school and elementary. They would have one stop. Sharing of teaching and classified staff would be easier amongst elementary and middle school. Also, maintenance and cleaning would, not necessarily that it takes less people, because they're same-square footage potentially, but just as absences occur or illness occurs, it's easier to roll with the changes. Substantial savings in energy of a new building, lights, new windows, all those kind of efficiencies would be gained. And then there's safety topics, that we would gain safety in the traffic flow from what exists today around Jolly and Austin. And that would require a little bit more study perhaps, but it's definitely an improvement. And bus drop-off would be in back of the building for both middle school and elementary school, so you eliminate the buses from that parent traffic flow. And then I did already mention the public entry driveway, where folks can actually get clear off the street. Now, the alternative, because we're asking our constituents in the community or in the district, 26 million is a good chunk of money. And so we studied the alternative, what it would take to bring Austin and Jolly more up to speed to 21st learning environment, and that's on our website, which, we'll give you that website address in a moment here. We could spend about $6 to $8 million and upgrade those two 67-year-old buildings, and maybe get another 10-years' use out of those. But that's $6 to $8 million for 10 years. It seems more prudent with the way financial markets are and the interest rate on those 20, or 30-year bonds, seems more prudent to borrow a full 26 million and get it done now. If we had to revisit that building cost 10 years down the road, if we had to go and just upgrade those buildings instead, would estimate that with what's happened because of pandemic, I don't know if all those prices will eventually go down for building materials, but realistically, in 10 years, you're looking at probably $35 to $40 million to do that And even if we put that kind of money into those aged buildings, it doesn't replace the foundation of the building, the deep, the sewer, the water, all those things that are not pretty-looking in those current buildings. It would not be able to address all those things. No, Jim and Mr. Alvey, we've worked on this for several months, so it feels very, like a no-brainer to us, but what am I leaving out?
I've been sort of helping out a group study that has applied to years before May was on, we've been to work on these well-studied rooms where you can visit high schools. We have a group of individuals that gave feedback on this, and we're going to look at some of the main points, we do minimize annual costs, we can maximize structural effort, and set this up for the 21st century learning environment, fill out the growth and student. And as we've heard before, when we went over to foundations, got tools of our community, we're looking at the move here, these are the next generation leaders, teachers, etc. And it is paper, and we've got, I think, considered all that stuff in this. Also, you have Jim, that's much of a need to the public, you also have a multi-purpose room, and all the facilities there, with some of the teachers and students from members we had contact with, different types of students. I mean, they may be included...
I don't know if people can hear me or not. Hopefully, you did. This people in the room did. But again, it's for that 21st century learning, looking long-term, minimizing operational costs, don't put money into these older 60, 70-year-old aged buildings, and we'll open up and see what the public can support.
So we will have, first public meeting will be on April 21st at Jolly Elementary in the library, 7:00 p.m. And then again on May 12th at Austin Elementary at 7:00 p.m. So we're going to have those meetings in those buildings, so that if people want to look around, we would love to have them do that. If they don't currently have children in those buildings, perhaps, they haven't been in there for a few years, we welcome you to look around and check them out. And those meetings, thanks to Dr. Moreland, that meeting will be broadcast on YouTube as well, and we'll have a short presentation. But the website is on your screen now, vermillonschoolbond.com. That's ready, that's got a lot of information for you. I think you'll find answers to a lot of your questions. Likely, we didn't cover all your questions, so come to the public meetings or use the link on there to ask a question, and we'll get an answer back to you.
And one last item, we did partner with USD. So there is that learning lab we've talked about in the makeup of the building and how we design it. So as we go further down the road, not fully designed now, the website can answer things, but they have a large input in that. So we appreciate their assistance and support.
Just a couple of additional items, too. There has been some public input already gathered, because there's been teachers, administrators, and fellow citizens invited in to be part of the committees. So that group had had some initial groundwork in the development. Although the drawing you see there is rather vague, it shows you the concept in general of what that building could look like, its location, and its impact on the neighborhood in that area. But the many, many details, like Jim alluded to, with what does the inside look like? What services can be provided? What 21st century additions would we want to seek? As this would potentially move forward, if we're given the approval of the committees, and then public, and then eventually a board bond, obviously, we would be visiting other communities that have state-of-the-art schools, whether it's Sioux Falls, or Harrisburg, or other places in Iowa or Nebraska, to find out the types of classroom space, the auxiliary spaces for 21st century learning, the physical adaptations that are important for students with disabilities, the therapeutics that go along with student education these days. All of those pieces will, would eventually be put into a nice, neat package and have a more detailed look at that drawing down the road. So right now, we're at the early stages, gathering lots of feedback.
Lots of feedback, and just so the public has an idea what timeline we're looking at, we want to try and answer all the questions we can. The website's active today. We're going to have the public meetings, our committee that Mr. Alvey talked about. We'll continue to meet monthly, and we will have to make a decision then to have a bond issue election this fall at some point, is when we would be looking for that final input.
And I might add as well, that the frequently asked questions section of that will just get updated as we get questions. In fact, I already received a question today. So the site is live, and once we have those questions, we will continually update the frequently asked questions section. So there's a section that shows the drawings, there's a section that talks about the materials of the, just the history of the school district and why it's important. There's an impact statement on taxes in that section. So if you've got any specific questions, you can actually ask by writing your email or actually writing the question in our, on our website, and it'll be sent directly to this committee to be evaluated, so.
That's a good point. That's always the elephant in the room. What is it going to cost me? So 26 million means $160 per year. So 26 million means $160 per year on 100,000 assessed value. So that is, that's the big number.
And we would be armed, yeah? We'd intend a district to pay it off early, don't know all the funding we may have available, but try to reduce that where possible, but we just want to stretch it out, keep payments low, and money is appropriate. And as Tim said, and Mr. Alvey, we look at public meetings the next two months, and then probably make a decision in May, what it looks like for early fall to go to a bond issue. And again, we have our children and teachers in these schools, eight hours a day, nine months or longer a year, got to give them the right environment, the right tools to succeed.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other board members that have any comments or questions for the? Okay, having been on the building committee when we toured the two, I have to, one, give credit to our staff, they take wonderful care of those 67-year-old buildings, but when you lift the ceiling tiles and you see where the roof is leaking, and the bathroom is mysteriously sinking at one of them, and we're not quite sure why, it, and I don't, I don't know how to tell you this, it makes sense to me that I have, my grade school is very nostalgic for me, but I wouldn't want my kids going there. They deserve a grade school that will be nostalgic for them in 60 years, not one that already is.
And we haven't mentioned, we're really capped at space in those schools, so to find more as the community grows, as we go, as we get more people living here, we're just limited. So to keep the ratios that we want and to grow, we need some additional, so this expands to allow us to do that.
And having two campuses means we would have a resource officer on each campus. We know the time to either of the two buildings now is short, but this is in the building, that's a, yeah. I think it's a great plan. Okay, moving on, COVID updates. I'm looking forward to the date, that is not an agenda item.
Yes, yes, thank you. Well, once again, we actually do have some very good news to report. Our administrative team continues to meet weekly and discuss the COVID updates. This week, we had one, or last week, we had one active case of COVID in the district, we don't have any this week. At this point, we had, 80% of our staff have signed up for the vaccine, and that's been over two weeks ago. So at this point, we've established that most of those folks that were going to do so have gotten that taken care of. We've also had information from Sanford that the vaccine is now available down to age 16 in our community, which is outstanding. We continue to do the mitigations that were part of our return to school plan. We've, over the last course of the last several weeks, we've done some adjustments, as approved by the board, which is allowing parks and rec to do some more of their classes in our buildings. We continue to have more integration of our academic groups, and we continue to see the numbers remain low there. In our buildings, if you recall from the beginning of the year, we had building isolation rooms, when we had a student or a staff member who became ill. We've been able to dismantle two of those and turn them back into stream labs, which was their original intent, so we actually have those back to being used normally. And largely, that's because, one, the numbers of students that we report are anywhere from zero to three a week, but mostly it's because anybody who is starting to feel symptomatic, students and parents have reported that and not come to school, which was the whole goal in the first place, is to keep students and staff members from becoming ill and then coming to school with that. So they've really done a very good job with that. And of course, last week, the school board did see our two-week data trend that shows where the cases are, and how that has greatly decreased over the course of the last several months. Really, quite honestly, since Christmas, we've had anywhere between zero and five per week, most weeks were at one or two, so we're doing outstanding. Just some things we want you to be thinking about as we move forward, you know, our next goal is to decide what does the end of the school year look like, but more importantly, what does the start of the next school year look like? So we'll be taking the lead, of course, from the Department of Health and our local health professionals like we have throughout this, but of course, the Board of Regents has already indicated in South Dakota that their plan is to come back completely normal, which is a goal of ours as well. We will know that as we get more data, of course, throughout the next several weeks and into the summer, but a new, or the normal plan would be to return to school in a non-socially distant atmosphere, no masks, and back to a normal school setting. So one of the things that we need to consider as we move forward, the remaining eight weeks or seven weeks of school here, is we have very limited indoor activities now. We have a few concerts coming up, so the list that I gave the school board to consider tonight is, actually, it's the third one down there, is, right now, our capacity is at 35%. That's what we use for our basketball and our concerts and things. We'd like to have the consideration, if it's time to move that up, to allow up to 50% of our participants to come for concerts. So if you have an eighth-grade concert, we would be able to seat approximately 350 kids and adults in the audience. We have a 700-seat theater, if we could do half of that, we think that that's a very achievable, safe number to allow to come to that event. Of course, we would not advocate for any kind of spectator limit outside, our outdoor activities are extremely safe. Just like we did in the fall, we had no limits on any of our outdoor activities from the South Dakota Activities Association last fall, therefore, we would not advocate for any kind of limitations on outdoor activities. We would recommend, but not require, masks at any of our outdoor events, when you're outside at track, golf, cross-country, or, excuse me, track, golf, or tennis, those are largely singular events that would allow for social distancing there, and then the spectators that choose to come would be able to manage themselves and figure out where they want to stand or sit to keep it safe. As we consider our look into fall or summer for our Beyond School Adventures Program, next month, we'll have a recommendation whether or not we would ask for any masks to be worn during the summer BSA activities in the school buildings. Currently, we have 28 students signed up for BSA, and largely held indoors for part of the day, and then outdoors for activities, and swimming, and field trips, and we'll make a determination on that recommendation next month. And then, of course, the South Dakota Activities Association continues to have a spring plan, which is identical to their fall plan, about, you know, riding buses, we'd ask our athletes to ride the bus that would be masked, but athletes in contests are not required to wear masks while running or participating in any of their events. So really, the last five items on your consideration list, something that we should talk about and make an amendment for our plan tonight, if the board has got some thoughts on that, we can discuss that at this point.
Thoughts on any of those requested or suggested changes?
I defer to our health experts, do they have any comment?
I'm sitting on over 1,000 vaccines to get rid of. We have some progress to do in our county, but I think, you know, no mask at outdoor bins, I think that's starting to make sense, too, especially if Hannah and I were outside and it was windy as it absolutely was, my goodness, blow weight. I think 50% is a comfortable level where we're sitting. And I would really appreciate moving the BSA and making that decision for May 10. And a lot of it, I'm assuming, will depend on still on most families' comfort levels, you know, if they're still wanting to or not comfortable with that yet, but.
So really, the three that would go into effect now would be outdoor activities, no limits, masks, encouragement not required, indoor activities, 50% capacity. Because we're not voting to continue following the South Dakota, we already are following South Dakota municipal activities, so.
Correct, and all the other mitigations that are part of your plan with what's happening in the buildings, the enhanced cleaning, the social distancing, the masking, are all continuing, yeah, so.
Okay, okay, so I see consensus that those requested changes are okay, and that we would defer to May 10 for the BSA decision.
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Tim and seconded by Rachel, to modify the COVID plan to allow unlimited, to eliminate spectator limits, I don't know if we ever had limits on a golf match before, but, and to make masks optional outdoors, and increase capacity to 50% indoors. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose nay? Abstentions? Changes pass.
Now, just a thank you to everybody again, in the district, in the community, everybody, it's been quite a year, and everything that everybody has done has made us able to get to this point.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, now we're moving on to new business, and I believe, well, as per our usual, we could accept a single motion at the end, although we will separate out item D for Carol's conflict there. Are there any other items in which board members would like an individual item vote?
I would like item G for the head football coach position as a separate motion.
Have that, anything else? Okay, so let's go through the items, and then what we'll do is have a separate motion immediately following item D, to which we approve that, and then a separate motion on G, I guess, sub one, and then we'll have a single motion for all other remaining items, unless anything comes up in the discussion. Okay. Item A, approval of resignations. So in your packet, you have the resignations, I will read the individuals who have submitted their resignations. Cameron Ballard as a part-time custodian, Sarita Aglebe, I think she's gonna, I can't tell you how many times she asked me to try to pronounce that, so I'm sorry if you're watching that I switched that. School nurse, Madison Martinez, girl's soccer coach, Madison Kenny as education assistant, Sydney Sutton, education assistant, Jesse Rasmussen for Oral and Terp, and Joe Del Voe as head wrestling coach. Then we have, under item B, approval of non-renewal of one-year contracts, so these were people that were hired on a one-year term contract to assist with our COVID mitigation, so they are not being offered a renewal for next year, they're not being terminated immediately, this is just non-renewals. Tracy Gilkison, aide, July Evans, part-time preschool health para, Kelly Mulherin as a health para, Ashley Newman, health para, and Marina Sareda as a health para.
Doug, if I might, maybe I'll just give a quick explanation on a couple of those real quick. Under section A, the reason we have unusually a high number of resignations this month is some of those are student teachers that have been working for us, or paras that have worked for us, that have attained teaching degrees and now are leaving the district to take on full-time employment in other places. Some of them are college kids that have helped us out in coaching positions and now are moving on to new locations, and some of them are just veteran coaches that have asked for basically some time off to do other things for a while. So it's an unusually high number for our district to see that many, so that's just a brief explanation as why. And all of the B people there underneath the section of approval of one-year contracts, those were all folks that were added this year for COVID. Those were additional staff that the board offered as one-year contracts this year in response to our COVID. So they knew this coming in, that these were one-year positions, we're just clarifying in the minutes tonight.
Item C is a calendar update, which would make for a 1/30 dismissal on the last day of school, which as a reminder is May 20.
Actually, sorry, May 21st.
May 21st.
The calendar that you see there in your notes, guys, is next year's calendar, it's largely done, I'm just putting it in there just so that you always have the latest on. We're continuing to add just things with PLT dates, but otherwise, largely, that calendar is the same as you approved months ago.
So dismissal for the school year will be 1/30 on May 21st.
Correct.
Okay, item D, this one we will have a motion on at the end, so. My mic's not on?
Maybe you can pull your good.
Oh, okay. So we have our, the Board of Directors for the South Dakota Associate, the Associated School Boards of South Dakota, and we can elect a representative for schools in our enrollment, enrollment 700 to 1399. And our two candidates that we have to discuss are Tom Farrell from Madison and Carol Boss Ward from Vermilion, thus her conflict with this particular item. Since we have the luxury of having one of the candidates here, Carol, would you mind giving us a few minutes of why you'd like to do this?
Sure. The Associated School Boards of South Dakota, as you know, represents school board members and advocates for school boards and their districts, and there happens to be an opening on their board for a representative from our region and from our school size, and so I would like to throw my hat in the ring, and topics that they cover include advocacy and leadership development and services to the districts. So I hope that anything I might gain from that experience I can bring back here to benefit our district, so I hope you will support me. Thank you.
And you have bios for each candidate, if anyone would like to say anything on behalf of either candidate, they may do so.
I think it's really exciting that Carol's willing to do that. I apologize to past board members, I don't remember the last time we had anybody run for a position, let alone serve in that capacity, so I think it's been quite some time.
Okay, yeah, definitely has.
I would like to nominate Carol Ward. Can you use that for her vote?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vote for Carol Boss Ward. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Rachel had the motion, and Tim had the second. Okay, Carol will be our vote for the Associated School Boards of South Dakota representative.
Thank you.
Good luck. Are you campaigning at the other boards around the state? Okay, moving on then, item E, suppose it seems silly for us to withdraw from the South Dakota High Schools, oh no, this is Activities Association, I thought this was our Associated School Board member, so. It'd still be silly to do that, but we do have to authorize our membership in the South Dakota High School Activities Association, and that's what item E is, so that's our resolution that we will remain or be a member for the next year. Then item F, we have summer work agreement. Damon, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, this is basically the next several, I don't know how many, but we have a ton of new hires that are going to be part of this section. It is part of our ESER, which is the federal stimulus that comes to public schools, and our team has created a list of ideas that we want to use to help address learning gaps for students that may have happened during COVID, and to address future potential learning loss when students return to school completely in the fall. So as you recall, we have some students who've gone homeschool this year, who have the intention of coming back to public school, we have some students who went to remote learning during the entire school year, and we have some students who have been in our district and our building the entire year. So you can imagine that there's a variety of experiences those students have, and there may not be quite the learning expectations at all of those levels. So our team has created a list of solutions to try to deal with that, which includes a summer school experience stated for this July, from the K through 12, actually, the high school version of this actually happens in June and July, just like always, but the elementary and middle schools will have theirs help in July, where we've hired extra staff to be available. Students will be assessed for any potential learning gaps, so we would invite any students that are either remote or homeschool, or are regular students in our buildings now, if you feel like your child has struggled, it would benefit from a learning opportunity from a learning opportunity to come into school this summer, make sure that you check it out by going to your teachers and your principals at the particular grade levels. But what we're asking for tonight is approval for summer help. You're going to eventually see BSA and Special Education, Alternative School, and some other coaching opportunities there, but all of those first things are all basically funded by ESER dollars, from stimulus dollars from the federal government. These will be one-year contracts, similar to what we've just dealt with a few moments ago, and these will be additional staff brought in for Title I services at the elementaries and the middle school. We're looking for a potential additional counseling position, we're looking for a behavior integrationist, as well as a behavior teacher for a behavior classroom. That is just sort of the tip of the iceberg that the committee has worked on, but that's what we're asking for approval for tonight, is additional staff underneath those headings.
Any questions? Do you see the list of staff? Okay, and we will continue on. So under item G, you have the approval of certified coaching employment. We have a number of those, there's a request to separate out the football coach, so I'll read the others. Christian Fossum for middle school title, Louis Budmar, sixth grade, world cultures, Joliah Evans, preschool teacher, Erica English, kindergarten, Melissa Greasy-Austin title, Mark Nietzsche, the CTE industrial arts, and we have two additions. We have Haley Doty as the JV volleyball coach, and Kelsey Lundberg as a Jolly title teacher. So the separated out item, so this is for Mr. O'Boyle as head football coach. I think I can start by saying I don't think anyone questions your ability as a building administrator or as a football coach, but there may be a question about the ability to balance those, and I think out of fairness, if you're willing, would you, could you take two minutes and speak to how you envision handling dual responsibilities? Or if you had to fire yourself as football coach?
That'd be up to the gentleman seated to my right and in the back. I'm excited, I'm humbled, and very pleased with the opportunity. In my past, I've been a 612 principal, and simply your day gets earlier. You know, you, your day starts, your day starts earlier, and you handle your practice schedule, and you handle your football things before the school day. You, about 7:30, you flip the switch and you are your everyday principal and whatnot, and you, at about 10 till 3 every day, you put the whistle on and head to high school. So, you know, it's a communication thing. It's letting parents know you're available before school, in the morning, or during the day, over lunch. In critical situations, whatnot, your staff knows, and you build a practice schedule that if I'm not available after school, not available after school, and they're certainly capable of handling the program and running a practice. So, you know, I think that with people understanding, you know, what's going on and where I'm going to be and when I'm available, I think that's, you know, it's a smooth deal. And it's not different than a classroom teacher that's a coach. They do the same thing. You know, they're not available after school either, and their day starts earlier, so it's, it's a little bit, what we all do is when we're lucky enough to be coaches.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Board discussion? Okay, so we've had a request to separate this item out. I'll go ahead and call for that motion for, so the motion would be only for the approval of Mr. O'Boyle as head football coach.
Motion to approve.
By Rachel.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion comments? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Aye, or nay.
Abstain? Okay, I'll record that as 4-1, motion passes. Guess you don't have to wait till the end, congratulations. Okay, we will continue on. Item H, approval of health dental rates for 21, 22 school year. I don't know if this is Damon or if Sheba wants to comment on this. Get to that page.
Okay, the health insurance rates, there was no increase this year. We are lucky in that aspect again. And the dental, I think there is a 5% increase, and that, those are in negotiations currently, but those are the rates that we'd ask you to approve.
Okay. Any questions? Very good, and we move on to our last item. Sorry, scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. I don't know, go ahead.
Yeah, so basically, we are pleased to announce we made these.
I didn't know, I thought we kept this secret.
No, we kept, no, we did not, we normally keep our Teacher of the Year and our Classified People of the Year, Employees of the Year, secret till the end.
Yeah.
With the exception of the district Teacher of the Year who gets to go into the state nomination. But this year we decided, you know, why wait? These are all great nominees, and we wanted to make sure that their colleagues had an opportunity to share with them and thank them, and really celebrate with them for the remainder of the year. So this year we had, in each of our buildings, our Teacher of the Year candidates. For Austin Elementary, our Austin Elementary Teacher of the Year was Ashley Jacobs. At Jolly, our Teacher of the Year was Lisa Ronning. At the middle school, it was, Teacher of the Year was Mariah May. And at the high school, our Teacher of the Year was Tricia Fisher, who was also voted as our district Teacher of the Year, who represents the district at the state competition. So well-deserved, many great applicants and nominees, and as we shared when we gave out some of this information to our staff, whether it was classified or Teacher Employee of the Year nominees, this shows you the caliber of people you've hired, because there's a lot of nominees, and their peers are recognizing the things that they're doing and nominating them, as well as parents. And board members are nominating teachers and Classified Employee of the Year. So Austin's Classified Employee of the Year was Anna Cable. Jolly's Classified Employee of the Year was John Walker. And at the middle school, Jody Rezak was the Classified Employee of the Year. And at the high school, Classified Employee of the Year was Shannon Farmer. So we want to thank all of them and thank everybody for their nominations, and we still have some more celebrating to do, these people will get some things at the end of the year at our celebration, and we still have a few surprises that we'll pull out at the end of the year and make a fun night for those folks. That will be celebrated on May 20th at 4 o'clock, that's our Thursday before we get out of school, we'll have our end-of-the-year celebration at that time. So more details to come in May.
Okay, so my apologies, I was thinking we were going to vote without saying who this was. Very good. So that concludes our new business. Remember, we've already taken action on item D and one under item G. So at this time I will entertain a motion to approve all remaining new business items, or, yeah, new business items.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Carol.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor of approving all remaining items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Abstain? Motion passes. We are on to reports. Mr. Elley?
Alrighty. Quickly, just ended the meeting items here, as usual, just wanted some thank yous to some of the people that did some extra things for us this last four weeks or so. This time it's really to talk to our building committee members, our finance, our personnel, our negotiator groups, all of the groups that this board compromises on the side that meets regularly for the good of the district. So thank you to the board members for the committees you serve on. Also thanking to the Booster Clubs for their organizing of working on the soccer and football practice fields. If you haven't been by there, we're doing some crowning and drainage work on the practice fields, so thank you for helping organize that project. In your packet you saw board members, that there was, basically our good to great, some notes there from our retreat back in the summer, some of the things that we feel that we've made some gains on completion there, I won't go over them all tonight, but just reach out to me if you have any, but the four overarching areas of the board retreat was staff development, and one of the things I think we've done really well this year is, I feel like we've made some good promotion on, was the professional development. We've got an ongoing plan and practice of professional development. We've got a, Kim, for example, is keeping track of this, so when we get an accreditation review in, within the next year or two, that's one of the things they're going to ask us, is what professional development opportunities do your staff have? And so we've got an ongoing list, and we continue to stretch that. A part of that was explored this spring at our January end service, where the teachers largely made up what the day was going to be. It was basically a boot camp for teachers, and they had the opportunity to participate in professional development opportunities that they chose, not necessarily that we created for them. More importantly along that line is that they also, along with administrators, taught those sessions, teach-to-teacher type of model. So we feel like that's one of those that's going on very great, making great development at this point. One of them that we're only feeling about halfway accomplished with right now is our grant writer. We've talked about this in the past, but that part of that was potentially solved tonight when we had our presentation for the Vermillion Public School Foundation. We feel like we've only reached about half of our capacity with that. Depending on where that goes, we have the opportunity to maybe see that goal go further. The second one that was a hype on the board's list was data, and how do we use data? Two things that I think that we've done well this year, or one thing that we've done really well, is trying to identify the activities that kids are in and promoting them, and then identifying those to the board and sharing data. So Mr. Huska comes twice a year to share with the board all of our activities. We know what every kid is in and what their participation numbers are, and we're tracking that and trying to continue to see programs grow. One area that we feel like we're about halfway completed with is our surveying. We've surveyed our staff, we've surveyed kids, and of course at the end of the year here, we'll complete that cycle by surveying parents, and then we anticipate that number will go to 100%. Infrastructure facilities was the third topic of the board agenda that, we feel like we've made some good gains there. We feel like we're largely done with facilities upgrades and study. You're never really done with that, but we feel like we've done a good job of exploring buildings. We've had walkthroughs of every building, we've had roofs, plumbing, wiring, Wi-Fi, brick and mortar, we've done a lot in our buildings to find out infrastructurally how each of our buildings looks. Now, the part that needs improvement is the facilities plan. What do you do with that data? So we only feel like we're three-quarters to that goal at that point. Collaboration, community, community service is our fourth topic that the board has put some spotlight on, and one of the things there that we feel like our collaboration and community service, one area that we feel very strong about is Vermillion Public School Foundation, Booster Club, other organizations that we partner with. I don't know if we've had any better time than the last couple of years where those groups have been most active and those, board has been most active in return. So we feel very strongly we're doing a great job there. One of the areas that we continue to work on, trying to find more support for all students, Native American students and students of any diverse background, that's an area that our school continues to try to find ways to improve and collaborate with groups to make sure that that experience is good. And finally, the fifth area of the board retreat was communications, and one of the things that we think that's working really well at this point is we're doing a better job of relating our services, or excuse me, successes, the services we provide, response to complaints, our administrators have taken on a very active role of trying to be proactive and communicate things. We've created an advisory council, we audit professional development, emails, and other things that the administrators are sending out to their staff to make sure that we're working, I guess, to be responsive. One area that we feel like we still have some work to do though is micromanagement and groups. We're trying to find out, letting people that are leading those groups do their jobs, train them, expect what you need to have happen, and then evaluate and hold people accountable, from the board all the way down through teachers and everybody in the district. So very quick overview of our, kind of our good to great, but we haven't talked about that for a little while, so I wanted to make sure we got that out. Excuse me, I'm just looking at my own notes here. As you, we already talked a little bit about the calendar update, the 1:30 dismissal at the end of the year. We wanted to also talk a little bit about the legislative bills that have impacts in education. Those are highlighted in your board packet. Really, the only ones I want to talk a little bit about are on, for the board members, it's on your first page, the, all the board, or excuse me, the levies have been identified by the state, so all the levies for education and taxable valuations are controlled by the state of South Dakota. Those will go into place here in July. The Senate Bill 64 is just an adjustment to, from the Department of Education about one-time budget dollars coming to schools in the state. On the second page, we talked a little bit about Senate Bill 46, which is basically allows the Secretary of Education to, during a declared emergency, have some waiver abilities and talk about hours and instructional practices. That's important for us because we don't have to wait for the federal government to allow that. The state of South Dakota prior to COVID didn't have this exercise in place, and so now we do have that at the local state level. Senate Bill 177, which is provisions related to alternative instruction and homeschooling. As you know, that that bill passed out of, at the state of South Dakota's legislative session, so the homeschool rules changed slightly this year for ongoing in the future. Accountability, participation, and things like that were part of that bill, and that has a direct impact on local education. Basically, Senate, or House Bill 1046 is a liability issue. The state of South Dakota has put a protection in for school districts for anything related to transmission of diseases, which of course during a pandemic is an important asset. House Bill 1083 is another accountability requirement waived by the Department of Education. House Bill 1127 talks about, for school boards, that during an official meeting conducted by teleconference, votes must be taken by roll call, so that has a direct impact on school board work. House Bill 1217 is the women's in sports action that the governor took. The House Bill 1217 failed, but Governor Noem did enact a, an executive order. That will likely be challenged, and so we'll have to deal with that after July 1. If there's a special session of the governor this, this summer, we'll have to deal with the ramifications of that potentially come next school year. And finally, initiated Measure 26, it's in relation to House Bill 1100, which is medical marijuana. Of course, there's, that's a hot topic as well at the state of South Dakota level to find out how that will be implemented, but right now, as it stands, we will seek clarification about the impacts of medical and medicinal marijuana on school campuses. However, most, this law was partnered after the laws in Colorado, which state that those, while it may be legal to dispense medical marijuana, a parent would have to do that and not the school authorities. So it would not be something that the school nurse would be asked to do, even if it was for medicinal purposes, it would be something that the parent would have to come to school and do. So there'll be more clarification of that, of course, as that law develops, but that comes into effect July 1. So, finally, the last few things there.
Hey Damon.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but before we go on, can we go back to Senate Bill 177, the homeschooling?
Yes.
Changes? Just a little more detail for the public. Many of us spoke against this bill or tried to convince legislators. me if I'm wrong, prior to this bill taking effect, we had a requirement that a homeschooler had to take at least two subjects with us to be eligible for extracurricular.
Correct.
And that will be no longer.
Correct.
So we, not, control might not be the right word, but, so we have no, no teeth.
Correct.
If they want to participate, they can participate, they're just subject to be in the rules and regs, but they, they have to. So, when a student used, just for the public, when a student used to take at least two classes, they counted as .2 of a student for funding purposes. We, we won't get any funding. And then the testing requirements, they used to be required to do the testing at grades four, eight, and 11, no longer. So that, you know, many people said this provides more accountability, and I haven't seen that. And I guess that's what I spoke to in my opposition to the bill. So just, I just wanted to point out a couple of things for the public to understand how some of this could go wrong. Maybe some good intention, and homeschooling has a place, but in Vermillion, many students or parents use that homeschooling mechanism, in my mind, for the wrong reasons. It's to avoid truancy requirements and, and that kind of thing. So, just wanted to speak a little bit deeper to that.
Yes, yes, you're correct. And part of the Senate Bill 177 was also to, like you said, that was supposed to allow for some more accountability, but in this case, our accountability really came from students being able to take assessments that we could have our, our eyes on and be able to know that a fourth grader, or an eighth grader, an 11th grader took those tests. And then we would be able to see placement when they came back, if they ever came back to public school. And we won't have that at this point. Now, maybe those parents will still voluntarily be able to give those things to us, and they certainly would be advantageous to do so, but they won't be required to do it any longer. Correct. And I guess, as we're looking into the summer, one of the things we talked about earlier is getting back to normal. One of the normal things, which we're very pleased to announce, is that our summer feeding program will return to Jolly Elementary this year, this summer, for its normal summer feeding program, and that will start right after school is out. In fact, I'm going to read a statement that basically follows, so it follows in the minutes, but this is a grant, granted behavior, or waiver that we were given from the South Dakota Department of, I guess it was Nutrition or Child and Adult Nutrition. We are going to have, our summer food service program will run from May 24th through August 13th. It's going door-to-door this year. At Jolly School, serving meals from 11 o'clock AM until 1 o'clock PM, which is our traditional time. Jolly School will be our only feeding site this summer. Congregate meals will be served onsite at Jolly, with no meals taken off from, from May 24th until August 6th. And August 9th through the 13th will be a grab-and-go option with no parent pickup option available. So what that means is, we are going to house it where people 18 years old and below can come for a free meal at Jolly, just like we've done in all of our previous years. Last year, we had only the grab-and-go option. However, Mr. Jacobs and Mr., Mr. Moore, Todd, at, at the Jolly need a week to get their gymnasium ready for kids to come back to school. So they need a week to strip the floors, get it painted, get the, the wax on. So we're going to actually go to a grab-and-go the last week before school starts. The lunches will continue, it'll be door-to-door service from the time school's out till the time school starts again, so we have a great program planned. It's just that we'll have a slight hiccup there at the end where we have to actually do grab-and-go for one week. But it's great to have that back. The other thing that we've received notice, notification from was, this year, the federal government waived school lunch fees, basically. They took away, it's at everybody in K-12 education, starting about September of last school term here. Nobody had to pay for school lunches. They were all free breakfast, all free lunches for every student that walked through our doors, which was outstanding. Unfortunately, this is not going to be the case this fall. The federal government's going back to its traditional platform, which is a pay-for-service, but free and reduced programs will be by, on a qualified basis as always. So that'll start this fall again when we return to school. And finally, a last thing is just talking about our summer BSA. Our Beyond School Adventures Program, right now, is seeking applicants to come in. We have 28 of our 40 slots filled. We're excited to be able to have kids back in the building, and as you know, we took a hiatus last year with the COVID pandemic. Our BSA program is still working towards the goal of becoming a Boys and Girls Club. We are working with a local board, which will be working on fundraising efforts. In fact, we meet next month again with the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Northern Plains out of Brookings, who is leading our, our discussions. And once we get our, our board fully set, they will go and begin the idea of communicating the needs of founding, the initial steps of turning our club into a Boys and Girls Club, which is an outstanding move forward for our district and for our community, because it offers so many great advantages. It offers before-school and after-school care, as well as through the middle school. So, the options are much more enhanced than we currently have. We just have some work to do with the goal that next summer, we'll be able to offer a Boys and Girls Club opportunity for our students and our parents. So, that's what we have today, lots of great news to share.
Okay, business manager? Now report. School board will be having executive session to talk about negotiations, so you'll get that then. Are there other board committees that have been in the past?
Let's start brief on the Booster Club. They have a golf outing coming up, fundraiser on May 22nd, so folks that are interested can apply, join us. It's, I think, the third year. The other one, just for an update, as Damon mentioned, out on the practice football field, that should be completed mid to late May. What's remains to do on that is the sprinkler, then it'll be sod and put up the goalposts, so that's new. Following that, probably a year out, we'll finish the practice soccer field, and that's part of, all this were part of their five-year strategic plans, will be timed for the new five-year strategic plan. And most importantly, working with Vermillion Public School Foundation, Booster Club did receive an anonymous matching grant, up to $7,500, so dollar-for-dollar grant, that any Booster, and they would also then relinquish rights, because this donor had given previous money, so the Booster Club could name the practice football field whatever they wish. That's a dollar-for-dollar matching grant through August 1st. So any funds from now to them designated for the football field upgrade would go to that.
Okay. Great.
I'd just like to share that it came to my attention during some conversations last week, that over the course of the school year, while we were in a pandemic, the school district, our school district played host to 30 student teachers and eight graduate students who were in school psych, or counseling, or special education, or curriculum and instruction programs. So even during the pandemic, I just want to share my appreciation with the district, and the teachers, and the administrators, and everyone who chipped in and made that happen for all of those upcoming professionals in our field of education. So thanks to the school district and all their work in making that collaboration happen.
Great. Any other committees?
Junior Achievement is wrapping up their classrooms. I want to thank all those volunteers for either going and doing that virtually or in person. I know I did mine in person, and it was really great to, to be back in the school. So, just want to thank Junior Achievement and all those volunteers.
Okay. And we have finance committee meeting. I think we've touched on everything that happened during the meeting, no health insurance, which is one, no health insurance premium increase, which is wonderful. I think at May's meeting, then, we'll bring forward some recommended changes for salary for classified, for cap. Yeah, for ranges, thanks, Rachel. And then tomorrow is our annual Board of Equalization meeting, that I'll attend on behalf of the district.
Very good. Any other committees we can think of? Excellent. Let's move on to our financial reports.
Beginning on page 70 is the business manager's report, the cash balance comparison, and then following that is the tax receipts. I don't have anything to highlight, but if you have any questions, I'll sure answer them. We are winding the year down.
If, I recall, is it prom ends next weekend, I believe, as I'm looking at the trust and agency accounts? Is that right, next weekend prom? Great.
If there are no questions, the bills actually start on page 74. And if we have no questions, we'll just ask for an approval.
Motion to accept the financials.
Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Seconded by Carol. The movement seconded to accept the financial reports and approve the claims, signify by saying aye if you agree.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstain? Motion passes. Okay, so that brings us to any future agenda items? Seeing none, if you do have those, please send them on before the next meeting, about, you know, seven, eight days in advance, so we can get that out there to the public. We do have need for an executive session tonight per South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, Part 4. That is per negotiations, and so I need a motion to enter executive session.
Motion for executive session?
Second.
Motion by Rachel, seconded by Carol. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session.